Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Dan Dever. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill Number 156. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Digital Harbor Foundation to expand rec-to-tech programming into Jefferson Recreation Center and providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $10,000. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill Number 157. Resolution amending Resolution 830 of 2018 entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into agreements to complete engineering design for a new multimodal connection of Hazelwood-Greenfield and Four Mile Run with Oakland and to provide for a specific payee and authorize an increase to the project cost to afford for additional design services within the scope of work, cost not to exceed $1,416,543, which will be an increase of $69,896.33." Bill Number 158. Resolution taking, appropriating, and condemning by the City of Pittsburgh for public roadway purposes certain property in 18th Ward, City of Pittsburgh owned by Michael Gene Eldon and known as 320 Arlington Avenue, authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto. Bill Number 159. Resolution taking, appropriating, and condemning by the City of Pittsburgh for public roadway purposes certain property in the 18th Ward, City of Pittsburgh owned by 2826 Edwards Way and Associates LLC and known as 322 to 324 Arlington Avenue, authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto. Bill Number 160. Resolution amending Resolution Number 763 of 2019 entitled, "Resolution Taking, Appropriating, and Condemning by the City of Pittsburgh for roadway purposes certain property in a 26th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh owned by Sessi Portuguese and known as 45 Semisir Street, authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition and relocation costs related thereto, to amend the chargeable account to reflect the 2020 operating budget." Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number 161. Resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with PNC Bank National Association to grant a license to PNC Bank National Association to enter onto certain parcels in order to perform certain work, including geotechnical and environmental surveys, site and topographic surveys, utility assessments, and engineering and evaluation. Bill Number 162. The Mayor is hereby authorized to issue in the City Controller to countersign three warrants in a total sum of $19,000, which shall be allocated and paid as follows. $2,250 subject to required withholdings made payable to Ermond Bucina, and full satisfaction of all claims, including but not limited to claims for any alleged lost compensation. $12,000 will be made payable to Ermond Bucina, and full satisfaction of all other claims. And $4,750 to Mr. Bucina's legal counsel, Whining and Baggin First In Market Building, its final settlement related to the action filed with the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Bill Number 163. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the total sum of $4,455.60 to AA Court Reporters for fire arbitration transcription services. Bill Number 164. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Pittsburgh Coalition and Reconstruction Services LLC in an amount not to exceed $7,458.00 for professional services in connection with the lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Peace. Bill Number 165. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 948, effective January 1, 2004, as amended, entitled, "Adopting and Approving the 2004 Capital Budget and Approving the 2004 through 2009 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Fancourt Street Bridge by $7,000 and Transferring Those Funds to the Uptown Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan." This bill is sponsored by Councilman Lavelle. Bill Number 166. Resolution further amending Resolution 772 of 2012 entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2013 Capital Budget and Approving the 2013 through 2018 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Electronic Daily Activity Sheets by $20,000 and In-Car Camera System by $13,424.71 and Transferring Those Funds to the Uptown Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan." This bill is also sponsored by Councilman Lavelle. Bill Number 167. Resolution further amending Resolution 816 of 2015, effective December 2, 2015, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and Approving the 2016 through 2021 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Signage by $19,575.29 and Transferring Those Funds to the Uptown Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan." This bill too is sponsored by Councilman Lavelle. Bill Number 181. Resolution authorizing the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a contract with the Kittleson team to conduct a parking and transportation demand management study for the Uptown Neighborhood, cost not to exceed $60,000. This bill is also sponsored by Councilman Lavelle. Council President Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 168. Resolution amending the Rules of Council. Rule Number 11: Invoices, to increase the departmental invoice maximum from $3,000 to $5,000. This bill is sponsored by Council President Teresa Kell Smith. Bill Number 169. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting the City of Pittsburgh Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the period ending February 15, 2020. Bill Number 170. Resolution appointing Reverend Lyddie Barlow as a member of the Commission on Human Relations, term to expire April 30, 2024. Bill Number 171. Resolution reappointing Wasula Mohammed as a member of the Commission on Human Relations, term to expire April 30, 2024. Bill Number 172. Resolution reappointing Rabbi Sharon Henry as a member of the Commission on Human Relations, term to expire April 30, 2024. Bill Number 173. Resolution appointing Will Tolliver Jr. as a member of the Commission on Human Relations, term to expire April 30, 2024. Mr. Tolliver will fill a seat that had been vacant. Bill Number 174. Resolution reappointing LaShawn Burton-Folk as a Commissioner of the City of Pittsburgh Planning Commission, term to expire January 2, 2026. Bill Number 175. Resolution reappointing Deena Free Blackwell as a Commissioner of the City of Pittsburgh Planning Commission, term to expire January 2, 2026. Bill Number 176. Resolution reappointing Senator Wayne Fontana as a member of the Pittsburgh Land Bank Board of Directors, term to expire November 1, 2023. Bill Number 177. Resolution informing City Council of the appointment of Corina Ricks as a member of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority Board of Directors, term to expire April 30, 2023. Ms. Ricks is replacing Aradna Alifant, whose term has expired. Bill Number 178. Resolution informing City Council of the reappointment of Reverend Brenda Gregg as a member of the Board of Directors of the Stadium Authority, term to expire December 31, 2023. Bill Number 179. Resolution informing City Council of the reappointment of Stanley Letterman as a member of the Board of Directors of the Stadium Authority, term to expire March 19, 2023. And Bill Number 180. Resolution informing City Council of the reappointment of Councilman Daniel Lavelle as a member of the Board of Directors of the Urban Redevelopment Authority, term to expire December 2, 2023. That concludes the reading of the legislation for introduction. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Strausberger, Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Kell Smith, present.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, you can be seated. Our next order of business is proclamation. We have Councilman Lavelle for a proclamation to be presented.
If the wonderful family with Ms. Amy B. Stevenson could please come forward, all Just come all the way up.
This one went through the wringer. No, I mean, a lot of papers.
Yes, ma'am. Right there, and I'll bring you up there to give some remarks. All right, very briefly before reading the proclamation, I called them a wonderful family because I know so many in the family, but I'm embarrassed to say I did not realize they were all related until this morning and I was actually reading the proclamation and then had a chance to talk to you all. So we're certainly glad that you could be here and be here with us this morning. Whereas, Ms. Amy Bell Stevenson, born on March 8, 1925, as the eldest of ten children of Lawrence G. and Mary E. Humphreys, will be celebrating her landmark birthday of 95 years with family and friends. Whereas, Ms. Stevenson graduated from Allegheny High School in 1943, going on to attend the Pratt Institute of Fashion Design in New York City, which propelled her toward a career as a design sketch artist. Whereas, while in New York, she met her husband, Sam Stevenson, as they were to be blessed with two children, Sam Stevenson and Sharon Stevenson Watkins, a family that through the years has grown to now include four grandchildren and eight great-grandchildren. Whereas, Ms. Stevenson returned to Pittsburgh where she worked many years for a uniform manufacturer in Bloomfield, during which time she began building a reputation as the formal dress designer in Pittsburgh, culminating in the opening of her very own store in 1980, Amy's Fashions. Whereas, in 1997, along with her daughter Sharon, she became the first African-American woman-owned business to be granted a license by Major League Baseball for items designed for Roberto Clemente statue dedicated at the Three Rivers Stadium. Whereas, Ms. Stevenson moved to Western Avenue in the North Side where she operated her custom design shop until she retired in the early 2000s, thereby further cementing her status as a pioneer in the fashion industry in Pittsburgh, in addition to serving as the union shop steward for a local manufacturer as she represented the local in her travels across the country in the 1980s and 90s. Whereas, Ms. Stevenson has been an active member of Metropolitan Baptist Church for 85 years, sang in the Metropolitan Singer's Choir along with her three sisters and cousin, Amelia Humphreys Ponder, is a member of the Missionary Society, and joined the Order of Eastern Star in the Heroines of Jericho where she served as the worthy matron and secretary for many years. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare March 8, 2020 to be Amy Bell Stevenson Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Beautiful. Is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second? All in favor? Those opposed? Proclamation's approved. Congratulations.
I thank you very much. I've read of you and seen you on TV many times, but this is the first time I've been introduced to you. And I'm very happy to be getting this proclamation. Yes, I'm going to be 95 and I feel good and I thank God that I was able to do so much in the years he allowed me.
You want to introduce your family?
Oh, my family, my daughter Sharon Watkins, my granddaughter Brittany Watkins, my brother, uh-uh, my son. My son. Raise your hand, Sam, let him know, this is my son. Sam Stevenson, his wife Tawanna Stevenson, my niece Donna, and Fay, and Brenda, and my brother Roger Humphrey and his wife Regina, and my son-in-law hiding behind everybody. Did I miss anybody?
Your niece, yeah.
Who? Oh, yeah, and here comes my, she's late, but here comes my great-niece.
And her cousin, I missed.
I'm right beside her. Oh, I'm so sorry, dear.
Anyone else?
I'd like to say, thank you for sponsoring the bill and we'd like to also recognize our councilman, all of you who live in our North Side District, Bobby Wilson there. And thank you very much and we've done a number of things together. Appreciate you taking time out of your schedule and everyone's schedule this morning.
Thank you.
Would everyone here for Women in Construction Week, please come up? All right, it's Women in Construction Week, we're so happy to celebrate. Whereas, the City of Pittsburgh, as well as the region of Western Pennsylvania, continues to strive for higher levels of construction and development growth. And whereas, the City of Pittsburgh is committed to reaffirming the goals of fair opportunities for women and minorities in the construction industry. And whereas, the National Association of Women in Construction, or it's NAWIC, is a nonprofit and international organization that promotes and supports the advancement and employment of women in construction industry. And whereas, NAWIC, founded in 1955 in Texas, now serves approximately 5,500 members in 190 chapters in the United States and Canada, as well as affiliates in Australia, New Zealand, and South Africa. And whereas, the Pittsburgh area, Chapter 161 of NAWIC, was first chartered on March 29, 1969, with 33 founding members, and now includes women who are actively employed in all aspects of the construction industry such as business owners, managers, consultants, tradeswomen, operators, architects, accountants, and attorneys. And whereas, during the week of March 1 through 7, 2020, NAWIC chapters throughout the United States and Canada will be holding special events to celebrate the annual Women in Construction Week. And whereas, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh wishes to recognize and commend the women who participate in the construction industry throughout the region. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the week of March 1 through 7, 2020, to be Women in Construction Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Proclamation's approved. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Deborah Pitchman. I'm a partner at Case Sabatini, a public accounting firm, and I'm past president of the Pittsburgh chapter, along with being regional membership chair for Ohio, West Virginia, and Detroit. So we're really happy that we received this proclamation and we'd like to thank everybody.
Hi, my name is Hannah, I'm a consultant with Lacan. Just wanted to say thank you again for declaring this week WIC Week in the City of Pittsburgh and what better way to celebrate than during Women's History Month?
Hi, Natasha Smith. I've been in the construction industry for about 15 years and I'm a project manager with PJ Dick, who's a commercial general contractor in the city, and we'd like to thank you guys for the proclamation.
Can we get all members up, please?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have three proclamations to be read into the record.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby congratulate Gabe Kish Sr. upon his retirement and commend him for numerous altruistic contributions to his community and abroad, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, February 28, 2020, to be Gabe Kish Sr. Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Council President also presents. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, March 4, 2020, to be Maxwell Albert DeFlich Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Council President presents. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, March 4, 2020, to be Quinn Andreas Rep Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve? Second? All in favor? Those opposed? Proclamation's approved. Thank you. Now we'll move on to our next order of business, which is public comment. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes to speak. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. The green light will indicate the start of three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize. When the red light comes on, your time is up. Please relinquish the podium. Will the first speaker please come to the podium? Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Wadakushi Wa, Hetaidesu, Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Oakland, American Society for Microbiology and the Genetic Society of America, Global Intelligence Society Candidate President, 2020, globalintelligence社社.org. In Yokohama, Nihon, Japan, there is a genomics science research center that has to do with the morphology of the coronavirus. Close by was the cruise ship. Mortality is very much on the minds of Japanese and many people here, and Chinese, Shinbeke wo men no, in Japanese. An ultra-concern of Pittsburgh City Council is or should be biosafety, biosecurity. Do the offices, I ask, of Council and Mayor of the OCM, offer the best information at the highest level of intelligence, the BIHI, I'll call it, on this 2020 novel coronavirus? I think not. Do the RLM-created CGSII, Center for Global Studies, International, Interdisciplinary, and the Global Intelligence Society, do so? I think so. My CGSII module library on 40 Beltsouver Avenue, you're welcome to come, but make an appointment, has, on virions, has virology, this major text. The CLPs- on virions, has, um, virology, this major text. Um, the CLP's, um, branches throughout the city do not have almost any information at a very high level at all. They don't have those texts, um, or the Journal of Virology. But we do have that and you can have access to it directly. Have the, uh, OCM established, um, a BHI, BIHI investigative bioentity? I have done so. Um, the Pittsburgh Center for Molecular and Atomic Biological Activity in 2012. Um, viruses are not bacteria. They are a billionth of a meter usually, very, very tiny. Um, and they're only partially, um, there. And in other words, they've got to get into the, to the, uh, to the cell and blow it up and, and take the DNA to work it. Um, but I did do this. And have the OCM endorsed provision of biochemical, um, nuclear, uh, suits, biohazard, chemical hazard, um, suits for our citizens? The answer is no. So that's a zero. I have publicly, uh, in public comment and elsewhere throughout this decade, have insisted that this City Council and that the Office of Mayor, this moribund Office of Mayor do so. This is completely irresponsible. The word immortality in Ijunggo is fuck you.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Oh, take your time. Good morning, Mr. Ludwig.
If you would. Uh, my name is Les Ludwig, uh, from Squirrel Hill. And I'm here today in my eighty-eighth year because of the fact that you have seen and ignored, government has seen and ignored totally. It's time to call out all of the pundits, all of the candidates of both parties, because this chart is an expression of simply one thing. Both parties have given away, as of nineteen, uh, as of 2009, forty-nine and a half percent of the population is in filing or paying any taxes. And you'll say, well, wait a minute, Les, what the hell's the big deal? What are you, what are you crying about? Well, let's just look at what it means in dollars and cents. In dollars and cents, it's thirty-seven trillion dollars a year. And this council has not moved to say, it's time for you guys in Washington to wake the hell up and do something about this. Return the people to the tax rolls. It's alright if you want to give the ultra poor, the ones that are so poor that they can't help themselves, it's alright to give them some help, but not over fifty percent. And our president has just added another thousand dollars that qualifies more people to be part of this statistic. I thank you for holding. So I have a vision. And that vision is that the money is there. It's not being collected. And therefore, the people who need the help aren't getting it. We just had tribute to a group of people. I couldn't hear any of, any of the sound because of a hearing problem, but I'm stuck. I was at seventeen oh seven Bedford Avenue, and all I had was African-American employees. And my best employee was the first African-American hired by United Baking Company at the turn of sociology. And he went on to be hired away from that company to become a manager of a Giant Eagle supermarket. Jimmy Anderson by name was that gentleman, someone who I honor today because he represents so much of what can be done.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig.
I thank you for your time.
Have a good day. Next speaker, please. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. You know, I come down, my name is Yvonne F. Brown, I live in the Hill District. I come down and I complain when I think that something is not right, if someone is giving preference over another. Well, up in our building, we have a tenant council, okay, but I had to take care of some business for my husband. And when I came back, the meeting was over, but he told me that he was the chaplain. So I said, how do you get to be chaplain? He said, the secretary told him that he was chaplain. Now, he understands now, no, you are not chaplain, because I already complained about him putting people in. You have to be voted in. And I said, if I come down there and you're chaplain and they ain't vote you in, it's gonna be hell to pay. So when I came back later, my daughter, Vani, said, Dad said, you hear your mom? Well, I'm gonna have security right there with me. Okay, 'cause he's watching City Council. That takes and intimidate me, 'cause if I don't stop talking when they say so. 'Cause in this council, and I want you to understand, I've been coming so many years, that I am upset that anytime that Burgess can take and I don't have my civil rights, I can't have the freedom of expression, thought, or, um, words. When he said that I can't say nothing to her, Ms. Gross, who's talking when I'm talking. I don't appreciate it, and the community don't either. They, they're looking at her, and also you, Anthony Coghill. I was reading in the paper, the street paper or something, it's a newspaper, they said that you were against, it seemed like you were against, um, uh, the, the black woman. You was for the white woman. Same way that I told you, that when them men took and beat up them black women, that, the, um, the, this attorney saying misdemeanor, that it should have been a felony. He almost knocked that woman's head into the, a gas thing. I'm telling you because I don't appreciate it, and Mr. Burgess is gonna have to, you're gonna have to answer for it. Um, I'm in a process of taking you to federal court because of your same race discrimination, because of my color, my age, and my activist and a whistleblower. I done blew on him a couple times, when he was gonna take that money and put it in his church and it was supposed to be for the neighborhood. That's right, leave. He can't take it. But he can take and stop me from talking. How come he can get up and walk away? You know something? Yeah, I mean it too. And just like this, when you were sitting there that day, when you said my grandbaby has no place to be in here talking. The whole community is looking at you irreverent. You know, in the black churches, you got children that will listen and come to church and will know the Bible at four or five years old, can get up and preach. You ought to know, you know that there's preachers that have become, come from children. And I don't appreciate you ta-ta-talking down to her, 'cause her eighteen-year-old, sixteen-year-old, and fourteen-year-old sisters watch City Council. They have come down to sp- to speak also.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Have a good day. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the presentation of papers. Councilman, Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Good morning, Councilman.
Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill Number 156. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Digital Harbor Foundation to expand rec-to-tech programming into Jefferson Recreation Center and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works?
Madam President.
Good morning. Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 157. Resolution, amending Resolution 830, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement to complete engineering design for a new multimodular connection of Hazelwood-Greenfield Four Mile Run with Oakland, to provide for a specific payee and authorize an increase to the project costs to afford for additional design services within the scope of work not to exceed a total of one million, four-hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred, forty dollars and forty-three cent, an increase of sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred, ninety-six dollars and thirty-three cents. Bill Number 158. Resolution taken appropriating and condemning by the city for public roadway purposes, certain property in the Eighteenth Ward owned by Michael Gene Eldon and known as 320 Arlington Avenue, authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto. Bill Number 159. Resolution taken appropriating and condemning by the city for public roadway purposes, certain property in the Eighteenth Ward of the city owned by Twenty-eight, Twenty-six Edwards Way and Associates LLC, and known as 322 and 324 Arlington Avenue, authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto. Bill Number 160. Resolution, amending Resolution Number 763, taking approp-, which, the resolution taken appropriating and condemning by the city for roadway purposes, certain property in the Twenty-sixth Ward owned by Sessi Portuguese and Forty-Five Semisir Street, to amend the chargeable account to reflect the 2020 operating budget.
You have heard, oh, I'm sorry, it's just introduction, but you have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to waive Rule 8 on Bill 160.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then it will appro-, it'll be appeared tomorrow on the Standing Committee Agenda. Did I do that right? Okay. Okay. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Morning.
That was a nice proclamation you did this morning, too.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 161. Resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with PNC Bank National Association to grant a license to PNC National Association to enter into certain parcels in order to perform certain work under geotechnical and environmental surveys, site and topographic surveys, utility assessments, and engineering and evaluation. Bill Number 162. The mayor is hereby authorized to issue to the city controller to counter-sign three warrants in the total sum of nineteen thousand dollars, which shall be allocated and paid as follows. Two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars may payable to Armand Bucina in full satisfaction of all claims, including but not limited to claims for any alleged lost compensation. Twelve thousand dollars may payable to Irma Bucina in full satisfaction of all other claims. Four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to Mr. Bucina's legal counsel. We nod and begin first in-market building as final settlement related to the action filed in the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations. Bill Number 163. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the total sum of four thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty cents to AA Court Reporters for fire arbitration transcription services. Bill Number 164. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Pittsburgh Collision and Reconstruction Services LLC in an amount not to exceed seven thousand, four hundred dollars and fifty-eight cents for professional services in connection with a lawsuit filed in the Allegany County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 165. Resolution, further amending Resolution Number 948, adopting and approving the 2004 capital budget and approving the 2004 through 2009 Capital Improvement Fund, Capital Improvement Program by reducing Fan Court Street Bridge by seven thousand dollars and transferring those funds to the Uptown Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan. Bill Number 166. Resolution, further amending Resolution Number 772, by reducing the electronic daily activity sheet by twenty thousand dollars and in-car camera system by thirteen thousand, four hundred, twenty-four dollars and seventy-one cent, and transferring those funds to the Uptown Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan. Bill Number 167. Resolution, further amending Resolution Number 816, by reducing signage by nineteen thousand, five hundred, seventy-five dollars and twenty-nine cents, and transferring those funds to the Uptown Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan. Bill Number 181. Resolution authorizing the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a contract with the Kittleson team to conduct a parking and transportation demand management study for the Uptown neighborhood in a cost not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Madam Turk. Councilman?
Yes, uh, motion to waive Rule 8 on Bills 161 and 162?
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the waiver? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Bill will appear on tomorrow's agenda. Councilman Conner, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning. Councilwoman Strasburger, uh, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And for myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one sponsored resolution, one communication, a quarterly report, and eleven appointments to various boards and commissions. And so, which one you've taken first? Take the sponsored bill first, which is Bill 0168.
Council President Smith presents Bill Number 168. Resolution amending the rules of council, Rule Number 11, invoices to increase the departmental invoice maximum from three thousand dollars to five thousand dollars.
Thank you. And now we have the, um, one, the one communication quarterly report?
Council President also presents Bill Number 169. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting the city's quarterly financial and performance report for the period ending February 15th, 2020.
Can you have a motion to read, receive, and file?
Again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Um, then we have eleven appointments to various boards and commissions. Can we take the reappointments first? Are there any new appointees to?
Reappointing first, okay.
Yeah, let's do the reappointees first.
Got it. Bill Number 170. Resolution reappointing Reverend Lydie Barlow as a member of the Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire April 30th, 2024. Bill Number 171. The resolution reappointing Wasula Mohammed as a member of the Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire April 30th, 2024. Bill Number 172. Resolution reappointing Rabbi Sharon Henry as a member of the Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire April 30th, 2024. Bill Number 174. Resolution reappointing LaShawn Burton Falk as a Commissioner of the City of Pittsburgh Planning Commission for a term to expire January 2nd, 2026. Bill Number 175. Resolution reappointing Dina Free Blackwell as the Commission, Commissioner of the City of Pittsburgh Planning Commission for a term to expire April Sa-, January 2nd, 2026. Bill Number 176. Resolution reappointing Senator Wayne Fontana as a member of the Pittsburgh Land Bank Board of Directors for a term to expire November 1st, 2023.
Thank you. Um, so we typically don't, uh, interview reappointees, but it's up to the, I'm sorry, so one more?
I'm sorry, one more. A reappointment. Okay, Bill Number 178.
Thank you, Councilman.
Resolution informing City Council of the reappointment of Reverend Brenda Gregg as a member of the Board of Directors of the Stadium Authority for a term to expire December 31st, 2023. Bill Number 179. Resolution informing City Council of the reappointment of Stanley Letterman as a member of the Board of Directors of the Stadium Authority for a term to expire March 19th, I'm sorry, December 31st, 2024. Bill Number 180. Resolution informing City Council of the reappointment of Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle as a member of the Board of Directors of the Urban Redevelopment for a term to expire December 2nd, 2023.
Thank you. You've heard the reappointments. Uh, I don't know if council would like, what the will of the body would be. Would you like to interview or, um, just, okay?
Madam President?
Yes.
For the ones that require council approval, I motion for their approval.
Of motion for approval, do we have a second?
No interviews for, were those all reappointments, or they do?
They're all reappointments.
Reappointments.
So there are two, there's two, Madam President?
Yes.
There are two groups of them. There are a group of them that we must confirm. There's another group of them that we simply are informing us and we must read, receive, we must, they must be read, received, and filed.
But you read them all together.
We'll make the second motion after this. So the first, huh?
You read them all together?
Yes, she read them all together.
You didn't read the appointments?
She read them all together.
Yeah, but some of them are read and file, and some of them are?
Yes. So for those, for those that require council approval, my motion is for those reappointments to approve.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam President, for those that are simply informing council, I'll make a motion to read, receive, and file.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Reverend, for making both those motions. Both are approved. And now we'll move on to the new appointees. There's only two, I think, right? Yes. And one's just informing us.
Bill Number 173. Resolution Appointing Will Tolliver Jr. As A Member Of The Commission On Human Relations For A Term To Expire April 30, 2024. Mr. Tolliver will fill a seat that had been vacant. Bill Number 177. Resolution Informing City Council Of The Appointment Of Karina Ricks As A Member Of The Pittsburgh Parking Authority Board Of Directors For A Term To Expire April 30, 2023. Ms. Ricks Is Replacing Orzaha Ophant. Ophant, whose term has expired.
Thank you. And do we, what's the will of the body? Do we hold for interview, or?
Motion to approve.
Are one of those not a city employee? I'm having a hard time following. I can't see with the glasses I'm wearing today. I apologize. There were eleven different appointments, and we skipped around. Which are the two bills that you just read? So I got the, I got the parking authority one.
173 and 177 are the parking, the parking authority board of directors, which is 177, which is a new appointment. And 173 is an appointment of Will Tolliver to the Commission of Human Relations.
My motion's for Will Tolliver. I don't have a need to interview him. I don't know if you want to. Also, if you want to, I'll change the motion to interview if you want to interview him, with council's will. I do not. If not, motion to approve Mr. Tolliver's appointment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
I'll just call Mr. Tolliver myself. I'm sure he'll be amenable to talking, so I have no need for, for a formal public interview. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm waiting for you, finish the bill, the order. And then the second thing is, I will then, again.
Let me just say that's approved.
Then I will also move that we re-receive and file Bill 0177. That's the, that's the informing us of Karina Ricks as a member of the parking authority.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? It's approved. So all appointees are approved. So thank you very much. I made that easier for everybody. And I thank you to the people who are willing to serve. And throughout the year, I want the people to know that council does frequently call different board members to get information, to find out where things are. And with more controversial boards like PWSA, I typically interview. I don't care who they are. So I just, I just want to make sure I say that part, unless it's a colleague. Okay. Now, is any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the presenting, we'll move on to the final, next order of business, which is reports for committee for final action. Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle Presents Bill Number 153. Report of the Committee on Finance And Law For February 26, 2020 With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 66. Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The City Solicitor To Enter Into A Professional Services Agreement With Pedro Gallo, Basik, and Rasbanti For Legal Services In Connection With Employment Law-Related Training In An Amount Not To Exceed $7,500. Bill Number 68. Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The City Solicitor To Enter Into A Professional Services Agreement With Leach, Tishman, Fascaldo, and Lamp For Legal Services In Connection With An Employment-Related Matter In An Amount Not To Exceed $13,000. Bill Number 122. Resolution Repelling Items And Resolution Approved On Various Dates Which Authorizes Sale Of Property And Various Wars To The City Due To An Incompletion Of Sale. 228 Kramer. Bill Number 126. Resolution Authorizing Issue One Of A Warrant In Favor Of $3,013 In Favor Of Duquesne Light For Damage To Their Light Pole Near 1205 Dennison Avenue From A City ES Recycling Vehicle Pulling It Down On April 30, 2019. Bill Number 127. Resolution Authorizing Issue One Of A Warrant In The Amount Of $3,300 In Favor Of Dan Hager For Damage To His Vehicle For Intersectional Accident With A City Police Vehicle And Emergency Response At The Intersection Of Frankstown Avenue And Washington Boulevard On March 31, 2019. Bill Number 129. Resolution Authorizing And Directing The City Controller To Create A Special Trust Fund To Be Designated As The Crossing Guard Special Event Trust Fund For The Deposit Of Monies From Crossing Guard Special Event Cost Recovery And Authorizing The Use Of Monies Deposited Therein By The Department Of Public Safety To Cover Premium Payment, Premium Pay Reimbursement For Crossing Guard Personnel And Administrative Costs Related To The Aforementioned Activities.
Thank you. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. So is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing no further discussion, the bills are ready for final action. Those in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Cahill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilman Anthony Cahill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Cahill Presents Bill Number 154. Report of the Committee on Public Works For February 26, 2020 With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 118. Resolution Granting Unto Jeff Yates Their Successors And Assign The Privilege And License To Construct, Maintain And Use At Their Own Cost And Expense A New Ten-Inch Concrete Sidewalk Along South Fourth Street, Five Existing Loading Docks, As Well As A New 88 Ramp At 317 East Carson Street In The Seventeenth Ward, Third Council District. Bill Number 119. Resolution Granting Unto PNC Bank Squirrel Hill Their Successors And Assign The Privilege And License To Construct, Maintain, And Use At Their Own Cost And Expense An 88 Interest Ramp At 5810 Forbes Avenue In The Fourteenth Ward, Fifth Council District.
Thank you. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing no discussion, well, bills are ready for final action. Those in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Cahill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Look like you're busy.
Councilman Wilson Presents Bill Number 155. Report of the Committee On Land Use And Economic Development For February 26, 2020 With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2031. Ordinance Amending The Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Article I, Section 902.3. Zoning Map I Change It From EMI, Educational Medical Institution To UI, Urban Industrial Property With Frontage On Jane Street, 20th, 21st, Mary Street, Edwards Way, and Harkam Way In The Seventeenth Ward. Bill Number 2307. Resolution Providing For The Designation As A Historic Structure On The Title XI Of The Code Of Ordinances That Certain Structure Known As The Joseph J. Weiss Jr. Federal Courthouse Located At 700 Grant Street In The Second Ward. Bill Number 29. Resolution Providing For The Designation As A Historic Structure On The Title XI Of The Code Of Ordinances That Certain Structure Known As The Bradbury Located At 1130 Redoor Street In The Central North Side Neighborhood, 22nd Ward Of The City. Bill Number 30. Resolution Providing For The Designation As A Historic Structure On The Title XI Of The Code Of Ordinances That Certain Structure Known As The City County Building 414 Grant Street, First Ward. Bill Number 31. Resolution Providing For The Designation As A Historic Structure On The Title XI Of The Code Of Ordinances That Certain Structure Known As The Pennsylvania National Bank Located At 3480 Butler Street In The Lawrenceville Neighborhood, 6th Ward. Bill Number 130. Resolution Amending Resolution 12 of 2019 Providing For An Agreement With Cascadia Partners To Assist The City In Developing Plans And Studies For The Development Of A Data Manual For The Comprehensive Plan And Provide For The Payment At A Cost Not To Exceed $213,657. Bill Number 147. Resolution Authorizing The City To Enter Into A Preservation Agreement With The New Haslet Theater.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Wow, so quiet. Thank you. Seeing that, the bills are ready for final action. Those in favor, for the, all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Cahill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now we'll move on to motions and resolutions. Have a few meeting announcements, and then we'll see if council members have something. This afternoon at 1:00 PM, council will hold an executive session as it relates to Bill 128. Also, this afternoon, with sessions at 1:30 and at 2:00 PM, council will hold a briefing on PLNI code changes. I encourage council members to attend to make sure that we're comfortable with the changes that are coming forward. Tomorrow, Wednesday, March 4, with sessions at 1:30 PM and 2:15 PM, council will hold briefing on, briefings on energy efficient upgrades. And on Thursday, March 5, at 6:00 PM, here in chambers, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bills 57 and 91 as they relate to Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund And The Millage Increase. Do members have any comments, questions? Well, this is, okay, sorry. Councilwoman Strasburger, and then Councilman Burgess.
Yeah, I just wanted to encourage anyone who is able to attend the briefing tomorrow on energy efficiency to attend. It's really fascinating, surprisingly.